Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. I'd like to call to order the February 11th, 2020 meeting of the Columbia Heights Independent School District 13 School Board Meeting. If you would please rise and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Molly, would you do roll call, please?
Yes.
Larkin?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Asamari?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Superintendent Kathy Kelly?
Here.
I didn't know if you were going to say your own here or not, so that's good. All right. Our mission statement: Creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. I'd like to call for a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Tumbled.
Second.
I'll give that one to John. Any discussion on that? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obsteing? Motion carries. Announcements for this week: Monday, February 17th, there's no school for Presidents' Day. The district will be closed. February 18th, Tuesday at 5:00 p.m., there's a school board work session here in the community room. On February 25th, which is Tuesday night, there are caucuses, so we will not have a school board meeting. March 3rd, on Tuesday, is the presidential primary elections. March 10th, Tuesday at 5:00 p.m., is a school board subcommittee meeting on policy in the superintendent's conference room. On March 10th, on Tuesday at 7:00 p.m., there's a regular school board meeting back here in the community room. Superintendent Kelly, do we have any correspondence this week?
Madam Chair and members, we do not.
All right. Thank you. Now, we're going to do citizen-employee representative communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may ask brief or may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and, if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on request presented at this time. Do we have any else? All right. Moving forward, let's, can I have a motion to move the consent agenda forward? It contains the personnel report and the minutes of the January 14th and 28th school board meetings, January 7th board organizational meeting, and January 21st school board work session.
Tumbled.
Second on that?
Second.
Thanks, Laura. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Obsteing? Motion carries. All right. Time to hear from members of the board. John, I'm not going to make you go first this time.
I'm ready.
All right. Well, Laura, would you like to go first this week?
Uh, yes.
Thanks.
I'll be, I'll be brief. I attended the 916 board meeting, and I suppose probably the most notable item was that St. Francis decided to submit a letter to withdraw from 916. That's approximately a 16-month process where they'll be gathering information. Now, it's not unusual for some of the smaller districts to pull in and pull out of 916, depending upon the needs that they have. So, at this point, right now, they're reviewing it, and I will keep you updated.
Thank you. All right. Holla?
I have been out for a while, so I'm going back to ARCC night and talking to community members.
All right. Thank you. Molly?
I attended some varsity boys and girls basketball games, had a lot of conversations with community members, and also had a meeting with Superintendent Kelly.
All right.
Thank you.
Back over this way, John.
Um, thanks. Yeah. I've also had a couple of conversations with community members, a one or two phone calls, a conversation with the superintendent. That's about it.
All right. All right.
I attended the boys' swim meet last Friday. It was senior night. They did a really great job. That actually came down to the last race just was the deciding factor. Unfortunately, the decision was not for us, but it was really fun to see those guys swim. I also attended the City of Columbia Heights City Expo, and they had many different departments that were, had some tables set up, and then they gave some presentations on new development and street and public works projects that are going on within the city. I'd like to thank the community development director who mentioned, kind of give a shout out to our, our new band room. And I'd like to, again, thank our, our voters for that and all the work that Brian and Denise and our team and everybody who's working on that did. So, thanks, a shout out to them as we were featured in the city's presentation. I also attended the middle school basketball games. Really fun to see them improving throughout the season, and I've had some conversations with parents and also spoke with Superintendent Kelly.
All right. I also was at the swimming senior night, which was fun. I may have been responsible, at least a little bit, for that last race, given its participants. But it was great to see the boys get so close in a meet. I went to the chair meeting with Member Mueller right before this, and Superintendent Kelly, spoken with parents. But I think among the more interesting things I was able to do was go to the AMSD, which is the Association of Metropolitan School District's annual legislative preview. So, they spend time creating a platform that, that all the metro school districts agree on, or the member districts, and they present it to the legislature. So, they open it up to all the state-level representatives, the Senate and the House, and invite them all to come. And we had all three of our representatives here or there on Friday, and so they got to sit and listen, and they actually did take time afterwards and some, some during a little bit to ask questions like, is that what you guys experienced? Which was nice to be able to just sit with them and have conversations about our unique experience as a district, because it is, it is a different snapshot than a lot of different schools. So, it was good to see that. There's information on their website if people want to know more. Superintendent Kelly is going to defer her report, given the length of the meeting. So, we're going to move on to the building vision card from North Park Elementary. So, love to see Tara and Jeff.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here with Principal Jeff Sasek from North Park. We're excited to share with you their strategic vision card.
Good evening, Chair Severson, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. Thanks for having us this evening. So, as you can see, our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And we're going to be hitting all of our core values tonight with this presentation. Again, informational update, there's no governance question. I'm sure you all are quite familiar with the strategic roadmap, so we'll get right on into our report card here at North Park. So, if you're looking at the mental health and wellness piece, so, a percentage of licensed staff who participate in health, wellness, professional development, now remember, these data are from the 1819 school year, so they're not exactly fresh. And so, that is in the intervention stage. I know that that's an area that has improved this year already. And our number of teachers' absences for the 1819 school year, there was no change from the previous year. And our number of students' attendance days, I believe we were at 81%. And that's something that we definitely want to look to improve, even though it's a baseline. We'd like for it to be up at least to progressing, as we know, the state, the state goal is, is over 90%. And that's where we want to be. We actually have been working with Anoka County. We piloted a, I did a pilot with them, starting in the 1718 school year, an intervention pilot, where when a family gets to six school days, we actually invite them in to meet with us and a child protection worker, a child welfare worker from Anoka County, to put together a plan to help students get to school. And we found actually that has had a certain amount of success, but still, there are too many student absences. You know, just one or two is too many. You guys see the billboards all over the place. Our mental health screener is something we've been doing for years in the district and at North Park. And so, 90% of, of our students who were identified have been offered services. That doesn't mean that 90% received services, but 90% have been offered services of one form or another. And again, we, we offer the services, and then at that point, it's up to the family to decide what they wish to do. In some cases, they don't want them, or they're already getting services outside of school. And then, our PD sessions focusing on trauma for the 1819 school year, there were three. We already have more than that this year. So, school climate. So, out-of-school suspensions. Out-of-school suspensions have never been particularly high at North Park or in the elementary level. We're in the progressing stage there. And actually, and I look forward to reporting on that next year. In the 1920 school year, we've already seen a significant reduction. And in-school suspension is something that we use a bit more liberty, liberally than out-of-school suspension, because we want our kids to be in school. And so, we do see, we are at baseline in that area in 2018, 19. So, personalized learning. And so, teachers who are utilizing learning management systems, such like Schoology, Moodle, Google Classrooms, and actually, we're considering including CSOW on that, because teachers are actually using CSOW as a learning management system now more than even Google Classroom. And we're at the intervention stage there. And just to keep in mind, that 75% is, that's a, that's a high bar. That's a high bar. And I'll be curious to see what it, what our data looks like this year, because I know that's something that we've put a lot of, awful lot of professional development into. And, and quite honestly, it should be a high bar. So, fast, so focusing on academic achievement, so fast, using fast assessments and, and fast data analysis. We are at a baseline there. 50 to 59% of our students met their growth target. That's 1819, and our goal is actually much higher this year, because that is, those, our main goals are based on those fast assessments and not the MCAs so much this year. Math facts are something we, we talk an awful lot about. Tara and I met at 7 o'clock this morning to discuss math facts with a group. It's something that has definitely been a lot of conversation. We've had a lot of conversations as principals, and we are actually trying some, piloting a new intervention called Spring Math, which is based out of the University of Minnesota. It's a lot like the press interventions are for, for literacy, except for math. And we have two teachers at North Park, Carolyn Teichner and Allison Burkus, who are actually seeing a significant amount of success with it this year, and we're looking at potentially going building-wide with it next year. And that's just a complete, just, it's an absolute focus on math facts. So, communications. So, my communications with families are more than 20 a year. And then, looking at families that are enrolled in CSOW, we're in the 1819 school year, we are at the progressing stage. That actually is over 70% for the 1920. And then, teachers last year were in high-concern area. Now, one thing to keep in mind is that we made the transition last year. We had been a school that, that we had always used classroom dojo. And we had teachers that, that had more than 90% of, of teachers participating in dojo and also families in dojo. And so, last year was our transition year. And these data, again, in, in the fresh data in 1920, Jen Howesworth and I were just looking at it last Friday. We're actually, all of our teachers are using CSOW now, and we are actually seeing over 80% of our families are signed up now, too. So, that was something that was, that was a goal for us this year, after the transition year of last year. Family engagement. We do have a lot of family engagement events, and, and most of them are tied to academics. And for the 1819 school year, we were seeing that 61 to 69% of our families were visiting CSOW at least one time per week. And over 90%, we always have really good turnout with conferences. We're very fortunate. It's usually from 92 to 94% of our families participate. Not all of them make it to conference night, but we also do home visits and we do conference calls for families that can't make it. And more than 90% of our families returning their mandatory forms, and then also with athletics and activities participation, more than 50% of our students participate in, in encore. So, looking, improving outcomes by reducing variability. So, all of our departments and grade levels actually have common prep time and use them. They're using them a lot more now, that we have put a greater focus on, on PLCs. And, and as far as annual variation of established budgets, talked to Denise about that Friday, and we were in the vision area with that also. So, our goals this year, as we discussed in the fall, when we came and shared our test scores, we really want to focus on student growth, and we want to be able to have, to be able to follow them more often than every spring, when, when we have the MCAs. And we found last year that our CBM scores didn't really correlate as closely as we had hoped to our MCA scores. So, this year, we put all of our eggs in the Fastbridge basket, and we're using AMATH and A-Reading, which are short-form assessments. They're more comprehensive. They, they assess more than fluency, which is what CBMs assess. And we can do both reading and math. And so, all of our students, K-5, took Fastbridge, they are A-Reading in the fall, and all students took A-Reading and A-MATH in the winter. And so, we're using those to actually, to track growth more closely and more often this year. So, it is our goal that 75% of our students will meet their expected growth goal from fall to spring in reading. And ultimately, as, as I told you all, in September, our ulterior motive is we want kids to love reading. And, and so, a lot of our PLC work is around creating lessons around, around text and giving students the opportunity to engage in text that, that is, that is pleasurable for them. And, and so, that's really more than anything. We've been cheerleading reading quite a lot, just reading as, as something that, that is entertainment, that is fun. And then, for A-MATH, we actually are, have the same goal. We want 75% of our students to meet their expected growth goal by the end of the year. We just had a dipstick today at our lead and learn this morning, and, and I'm pleased to see the growth that our students are making. And, and I hope that it does correlate with the MCAs. The, the data that I saw today, again, it was encouraging, but we still, we got a long way to go. We got six weeks until, until we lead, North Park leads us away, does the, the initial tee off of the MCA reading, March 17th. So, do you have any questions?
Go ahead. She's scrolling.
I had a question, and then I was, I lost it.
I have a question while she's looking.
Yeah.
If that helps.
Yep.
First, I want to say, I think there's a lot of really great things happening at North Park. I had the opportunity to be liaison for part of last year, and the community and the involvement and the culture and just the feeling and vibrance over there is to be commended.
Thank you.
I think it just, it feels good there. And I, you know, as a parent who didn't have kids at North Park or anything, it was kind of fun to see that and experience that with what you have going on over there. Looking at where you're at and what you're reporting, you know, on the, you know, it, it all comes down oftentimes to the numbers, where I think there's just so much more happening over there than the numbers, and I think, I don't want to forget that. And so, I'm going to ask you some questions based on numbers, but I'm going to preface that by, I understand
Sure.
the whole child wellness that's happening over there, which I think is great. But looking at the numbers, at, that, you know, we're currently reporting that the reading and math, that 50 to, you're at the 50 to 59% of the kids that are reaching their, their, their targeted growth, where you're looking at, at creating that or bringing that to 75% this year. I think I asked this question to the Valley View principal as well. Do you have the tools and the support, and your staff feel that they have the support to get there? Because those are, I mean, that's, that's, that's a great goal, and that we need to get there, but we need to make sure that you feel that you've got what you need to get there, because what I don't want to see is students and teachers frustrated that we're trying to achieve a goal, that we're not providing the support and the tools for them to actually make that achievable.
Yes. You know, and we're learning a lot more about our needs and exactly where we're going with the PLC work that we're doing this year. And one of the things that has been frustrating with press interventions, that they're wonderful interventions, but we do have a lot of students who do, do need pretty, you know, intensive interventions. And so, our class-wide interventions are actually going pretty well. It's when we come down to the, the need for the one-to-one interventions, you know? And in kindergarten, first and second grade, we're very fortunate. We have a literacy interventionist who works with, with our neediest kids. And the purpose, that's, it's, we get most of the funds for that from a grant, the AdSIS grant. And, and the purpose of that, of that position is really to keep kids from being assessed for special ed, because we know that if we can catch them early, that, you know, get them up to grade level or a lot closer to grade level, that, that we won't be doing as much assessment. And, and we, we don't have a position, a position like that, working with third, fourth, and fifth grade. And I know that that's something that, that we've always struggled with. Our teachers are hard working, and they really do make do. It would be nice to be able to do a bit more than, than the, the class-wide interventions. And I guess some of that is school day length, too. And, and I'm not, you know, here cheering for a 10-hour school day or anything like that, because that wouldn't be appropriate for kids either. I'm really looking forward to seeing what our results look like this year. And for the first time, really in two or three years, I really feel like we're on a different kind of path. I feel like our curriculum is strong. I feel like our PLCs are, you know, in places they've never been. You know, but you know how it is in schools. You always feel like you need more resources and want more resources. As far as frustration goes, that's not at all what I'm feeling in North Park right now. I'm, I'm feeling a lot of energy and a lot of hope. And there is no construction noise that can disrupt us right now, so we're ready to go.
Thank you. Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah. Actually, it was about the in-school suspensions. When I see the baseline of being 14 to 20% of total number of students is that, I'm, I'm wondering exactly what does an in-school suspension look like? How long are the students removed from the class? I mean, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'd like to have a little bit more information on that.
And what in-school, so, we count, we counted as in-school suspension if a student spends more than half a day, or half a day or more in time to think. So, it happens in time to think. And so, they're with one of our most highly-trained EAs during that time, and they have work to do. They're sent work from their teacher. So, they're essentially doing the same work that they would have been doing in class. You know, it's really, it's, it is our mission to keep kids in school, you know? And I know this year, when I look at, when I was just looking at our out-of-school suspensions thus far in the year, and we only have 10 at this point. And some of that is mitigated by in-school suspension, because there, there are offenses where, you know, perhaps they would be suspendable, but we don't want to send a kid home. So, we keep them in school, because we know that they're going to be more likely to get what they need academically in school. And it's not unusual to see students' teacher going up to time to think when a student is in time, is in ISS, to, to see how they're doing and to help them out. And again, looking at those numbers, I would much rather see us at baseline with ISS and progressing our vision with OSS. But honestly, I'd like to be in vision in both of them, because ideally, we want kids in their classrooms.
Well, I, like I said, I, as far as a comparison, I know with a lot of these, these numbers here with the new scorecard and stuff, so it seemed kind of high to me. But I also know that sometimes kids just need a place to settle down.
Right.
So, you know, I, I was just kind of wondering how that was being utilized.
Well, yeah, and that's, and it's actually a good question, because we also utilize ISS and time to think for students to just, to, to regulate.
Yes.
Period. You know? Because there is, there's actually, it was an instance today, a student that, you know, is a fifth grader that we've been working with for six years, that we know incredibly well, and we knew that he was off today. And it's like, you know what, buddy? Let's get your work. Let's take you over here, because you're going to make it through this day. You're going to get what you need. It's just going to be in a different place. And so, we will use it for that every now and then. But by no means, I, I don't even think we have, at this point in, in time, we, I don't think we would average one ISS per week at this point. I mean, even that is pretty unusual.
Okay. Kind of a follow-up. I'm, I'm sorry about that. One of the things that you said to, to regulate and stuff, is there anything that can be done in the classroom for children to self-regulate, especially with the learning labs?
Oh, absolutely.
That offers a little bit more freedom.
Well, and that's what our, our teachers are doing an awful lot of learning in trauma-informed instruction, and have been for the last couple of years. And, and they are incredibly artful in keeping kids in class, you know? And, and so, a lot does happen in class. But there are times where it's just being around other people.
I, I, I do, I do understand. I just, I just wanted to, like, a little bit more of the
Of course.
thought process and the different steps. I appreciate that.
And I mean
Can I share? We've worked with special education, with Dr. Fry and Marsha Walker on, and the social workers on creating combing boxes and having yoga comb training. So, there's a lot of proactive pieces going into it as well.
Innocent classroom thing.
Yeah.
And we also partner with Lee Carlson. We have Jordan, who, a therapist, and she's with us four days a week now. So, we have a, a high number of our, a higher number of our students than ever that are receiving the therapy services, and they're able to do it in school, so they don't have to miss school to, to go to appointments. And in some cases, their parents might not be able to get them there in the evenings. And we also have social groups, and, and we have a social worker. And so, we do have an awful lot of mental health support. And we aren't really trying to use ISS for mental health support, but we also know that there are times where kids need a quieter place.
Well, yeah. It's, well, it's for the, the school climate. Thank you, thank you for indulging with all of my questions.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Holla.
You mentioned that sometimes, like, today you used ISS for a dysregulated student. In terms of reporting and how it's documented, does it go down as a disciplinary thing? Like, does it go into DIRES or as a suspension? Or is it just kind of like, okay, we're going to use this space for that?
It, it depends on the situation. It depends on, on the infraction, to be honest. So, you know, it doesn't go in DIRES, okay. Yeah, no, it doesn't go in DIRES, but it goes in synergy.
We do keep track. We do keep track of it for our own, like, internal, in order to support our students more and have discussions. Yes.
Got it. Thanks.
All right. Any more questions? All right. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. I'd like to welcome up the Human Resources Department.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Tonight, we're here to present an update on the Human Resources Department. Again, our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And we are going to look at all the core values tonight during our presentation. So, before we start, I just wanted to introduce the department. Most of us are here except for one person. So, you have myself, the HR Director, Elizabeth, on the end, who's the HR manager and has been here since 2006. Heather Lynch is our benefits specialist, and she started in 2018 when we took over benefits and has been a wonderful addition to the department. And then, Andrew Jaeger is our HR generalist, and he started this fall and came to us from Rochester Public School. So, as Kathy says, we steal them fair and square. So, he's here. And then, we have Heidi Sell, who's our admin assistant, and she does point five for us and then point five for the finance department. So, I'm going to hand it off to the team, but some stuff we're going to cover: staffing, performance management, employee relations, employee engagement and recognition, benefits administration, and labor law compliance. So, I'll let the department do more talking than me tonight.
I think I've seen some of you in passing, so it's nice to finally be here and meet you. Since I've been here in September, since Labor Day, we've had 45 new hires. We've done 58 new postings, mix and match from all the different areas. We've been exploring new recruitment options. We've been, been going hard with Indeed, trying to make that work for us. Maggie in Food Services also showed us Good Food Jobs, which is another website that she's learned from her culinary contacts. Been trying that out, as well as some professional organizations, MASA, MASBO, M-A-S-M-S, and then, of course, EdPost, the statewide teaching board. Been trying out LinkedIn. We'll see how it goes, maybe this spring. Possibly just mentioning, like, how our development goes, getting that out there, if there's any teachers watching us on LinkedIn to see, sort of, how fun our developments are. And then, I will be attending the Wisconsin Education Recruitment Fair. It's going to be an online job fair in March. This will be my first online job fair, I think, maybe the first
First for the district, too. So, yeah.
So, we'll see how that goes. We've been contacted about others as well, staying within the budget. Some of them are a little expensive, but we'll, we'll see what we can do and, you know, what they do for us this spring and summer.
And then, just some other things, too. Andrew meets with all the new hires when they come into the district. And so, he meets with them, goes through all their paperwork, and they have that first point of contact. Also, staff retention, and then the annual staffing process, which I work on.
Well, performance management, we continue to do all of the, and evaluation process. But I continue to maintain the tool, sorry. And ensure timely completion for all the other employees in our district, and that would be basically from our assistant principals. And we rolled out this year our custodial performance evaluation tool. They were a unit that had been being evaluated on an annual basis. So, this is the first year that we'll be working with them on that. that. Next year will be our last group of employees who will join this tool, and that will be the performance group. So all of our evaluations are directly linked to our job description. So they are right in line with these essential functions in the job description for the position that they were hired for. I also work with supervisors to make sure that goals are established for all our employees. That's another piece of our performance evaluation tool. And that we are working towards accomplishing those goals on an annual basis. Some other things that I continue to work on are feedback surveys. These go out annually for our managers, our coordinators, our teams, our directors, and our principals. We send out about forty a year. So that involves setting up the surveying, identifying where respondents will be, compiling the results, and making sure those are being distributed as appropriately. And I work with Lindsay on updating job descriptions as needed and making sure those directly link into our performance evaluations. That's something that is ongoing.
Okay. You want to start?
Sure. From the job offer until the new employees onboarded, I help them with, finalizing them with our benefits and their employee contract. And then accordance with the Minnesota new wage theft labor laws, they all have a wage agreement prepared for them, as well as their personal contract, if they have one. And then we also do those, we'll do them year to year. So we'll prepare them over the summer for the employees returning. And then also this fall, we, we had to do new ones for any transfers, lane changes. And then when the teachers settled their contracts, we got those, Lindsay got those new ones out.
Then we also have as part of employee relations, personnel matters. So if people have questions either regarding the contract, performance concerns, we help with those. Elizabeth works on the employee leaves. So anybody who goes on a medical leave, parental leave, work comp leave, military leave, sick leave, she handles that. We update the employee handbook every year and make sure that we're, have all our policies in there that we need to have. Contract negotiations, and then Elizabeth does the workers' compensation. Employee Engagement and Recognition Program. So this is some of the fun stuff we get to do. We have the Health and Wellness Committee, which we receive funds from our co-op that we belong to for our health insurance. We get so much money every year. And this year, we're able to do our wellness bags. We put some money towards the December twenty-third District In-Service, sponsored a salad bar lunch. We've had massage reimbursements, class reimbursements, tenure teacher recognition, employee of the year, the career celebration that comes up in May every year, master's degree recognition, years of service. HR sends out to staff for one, five, ten, and fifteen years, a little token and a card signed by us thanking everybody for their service. And then one of us, or most of us, try to get out to each building and recognize staff at their staff meeting. And then we help out with the employee spotlight in the e-news.
For benefits, I don't want to bore you with all my day-to-day stuff, so I'll just kind of gloss over that. I just do the monthly auditing of bills and reconciling 403B administration, employee inquiries, and those sorts of things. But there have been some bigger things that I've been working on this year. For one, in the fall, the teachers' contract settled, which you all know. With that, we saw an increase in district contributions to the health insurance premiums and 403B match increases. And we had to do a retro for those, back to seven-one in December. That was the first time we did it in our new payroll system, and I think it went pretty well. I've also been working on ramping up communication and marketing materials and benefits education. I've had several benefit presentations and sessions on in-service days throughout the year. A couple of the benefits sessions for the teachers were at full capacity. So I was happy to see that, that employees are really interested in learning more about their benefits. Some presentations I'm working on for the upcoming month or so prior to open enrollment is understanding the difference between our plans and helping employees to choose a plan that's right for them rather than stay on the same plan they've had for years, just because that's what they're used to. Just making sure that they're making informed decisions. Another big thing for this year is our RFP, or Request for Proposal, for health insurance for 2020, 2021. We are required to go out to bid every year, or every other year, sorry. We're currently receiving bids from carriers. They're still sealed. We'll be opening bids sometime next week. We'll do initial evaluations and work with the carriers to make sure we get the best plans and the best, the most affordable plans that we can. ACA is a hot topic in Washington this year. The validity of the ACA without the individual mandate, and the fact that there's no individual mandate penalty anymore. Long story short, the ACA is still a law, and we are still required to send out 1095 forms to employees, even though they don't need them. The deadline is March 2nd, and I'm working on that right now. We do partner with EBC Solutions. They provide the system for us, and I go in and input all the data, make sure everything is correct, and verify all of that before it goes out to employees. And then last, but not least, is open enrollment, the big, big event of the year for benefits. I'm just working on initial timelines right now, hoping to have open enrollment in May again. But again, with the RFP going on, I'm not clear whether there will be changes or not. You need to go through all that whole process before I can really get into actually planning open enrollment, so.
Okay.
Okay, and for labor law compliance, I think all four of us have been in and out of webinars over the last couple of months, especially with the new wage theft laws. With them being so new, we're still going to be probably seeing how they actually impact school districts with it, not really being made for us. So we're still staying up to date on that. And then we're also checking in on if we have any new labor law posters to put up. So every, it's usually either the break room, or maybe a copy room here or there at the, each site, they all have labor law posters, and need to make sure that they're compliant and up to date.
Oh, I continue to do all the leave day tracking. So sick, personal vacation, I track those absences, and then I make sure that the leave balances are accurate and they're receiving the proper approval on an annual basis. The OSHA log is something that also falls under me, along with the work comp, which Lindsay mentioned. The OSHA log is reporting of workplace injuries, if they meet a certain threshold of the government, and abiding by their being regulations. And that includes some electronic submitting and then posting of a calendar year summary in all of our buildings. And then I'll just give down another little piece here on the miscellaneous that I do with the lane change and credit for approval process. So we have teachers who take courses throughout the year to advance to a higher education level on their salary schedule. We call that a lane. And so that requires being in an approved program at times. It requires having credits for your approved. And then when the time comes, we have lane changes twice a year. So working with them on those lane change applications and transcripts. We had about thirty to change lanes this fall, but about fifteen that are planning on changing lanes this year. And here we see that at the fourth level for approval coming up in March.
And then just some of the other miscellaneous responsibilities. So we have background checks. So every employee completes two background checks. There's the BCA, which we have to by law, and then we do a more extensive background check, too. But all volunteer student teachers, pretty much anybody who's going to be in our buildings has a background check on file. We have student teacher placements. So it's one of our best resources to get new teacher candidates. We try to place many special ed teachers and other EL teachers in elementary math. We have a lot of schools reach out to us to try to place. District Calendar, which you'll see tonight, we coordinate that committee. Demographic changes. So Heidi in our department makes sure if you move, have a last name change, she'll get that changed in the system. Health and Safety Training, which is an online system. And then with the new licensure, so there's tier licenses, which has been a change in the last couple of years. So I'm applying for tier one and tier two licensure in out-of-field. So that's our department. And we always say we strive for irresistible employment. So, any questions?
Any questions?
I'm busy. Welcome, Andrew.
You didn't mention the STAR report.
I forgot the STAR report. They got rid of it for the spring, so it's like we're out of, it's out of mind.
Well, thank you for coming and joining us tonight. John, as previously historically mentioned, that you don't have to stay for the whole meeting unless your boss makes you, so.
I told him to run.
Okay, all right, all right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Got some exciting information on a teacher mentorship and retention grant. Come on up.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, we're here tonight with a very exciting announcement that we were granted, a Professional Educator Licensing and Standards Board Grant to help with teacher mentoring. Again, our mission, all belong, all succeed. And this one really does hit all the core values. It's just, this one really does. It's an informational presentation. There's no governance question. So the goal of the Pelsby Grant was to develop teacher mentorship programs for teachers new to the profession or district, including teacher residents, teachers of color, teachers who are American Indian, teachers in licensure shortage areas, and teachers with special needs or experienced teachers in the need of peer coaching.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, as we looked at the grant, we had to really focus in on areas that we wanted to improve in Columbia Heights or to support our teachers. And one really was at mentorship for new teachers. So adding additional hours for our teachers of color and American Indian teachers to receive mentorships or mentorship hours or to observe other classrooms. So they have the opportunity to see teachers who have been here a while, who are succeeding, and be able to see some ideas and gather strategies and meet with them. We also are excited because we're able to offer mentoring for second and third-year teachers. So we've had it in the past. When Superintendent Kelly was up in Teaching and Learning, we've talked about it many times, that it was very successful, that it's great to have the first year, but because of budgets and other pieces, we're not able to continue it. But thanks to this grant, we're able to add in hours and support our second and third-year teachers. So this is a breakdown of the funding we received. Our funds do need to be used by June 30th of this school year. So it really was a short grant, but we are able to roll over funds into the next fiscal year if we don't completely use them up. And then we also are able to apply for the next school year. So we already received information about that, and we'll be applying for the next school year as well. So we're excited. It's almost $20,000 in funding to support us from now until June.
Good evening, Chair Severson, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. So our next steps for the Pelsby Grant will really begin with reaching out to teachers and asking what they need. So for our first-year teachers of color and American Indian teachers, we'll be having a meeting with them to discuss support they are interested in receiving. For our second and third-year teachers, as Tara mentioned, we'll have opportunities for them to observe other teachers' classrooms and get support from mentors. We'll also be doing a survey of our second and third-year teachers to gather their input on support that they would like to receive. And for our special education teachers, we're going to be focusing on support with due process, which is a huge part of their job and a very challenging part of their job, and some, an area that we know we need to provide additional support. So we're very excited about this opportunity and eager to provide additional support for our non-tenured teachers.
Can I add in something?
Sure.
We really have been focusing in with HR and different departments on recruiting teachers of color. And we are very excited because our new teachers of color, how many do we have? I think there's...
We have the most diverse cohort that we've ever had. So our first-year teachers, yeah, it's a more diverse group.
Yeah, ten to twelve teachers, and we're very excited about that. So we're excited for this grant to support and retain our teachers.
Great. Any questions?
Kudos to you. That's wonderful. Many districts struggle to get that done.
Yep. Go ahead.
That's, that's really wonderful to hear because that's been the, we really, we really want our students to be able to have role models that they can identify with. And I think, I think that's fabulous. And, and it's so difficult because they're, it's just great. I mean, maybe our students now will consider teaching, you know, because they're role models. And, you know, that's the best place to start. Thank you for doing this and being able to support our teachers. This should actually have been with the irresistible employment as well.
All right, thanks. That's great news. Thanks for, thanks for coming and sharing it with us.
Thank you.
All right, the Achievement and Integration Plan and Budget.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. This evening, I'm here to present information on the Achievement and Integration Plan and the Budget. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And we'll focus in on the core values of excellence, collaboration, and innovation. This presentation will include governance. So this evening, I'll be presenting information, and then back on March 10th, seeking approval. This is due to the Department of Education mid-March. Here are the statutes for the Achievement and Integration Program. The purpose is to pursue racial and economic integration, increase student achievement, create equitable educational opportunities, and reduce academic disparities based on students' diverse racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds in Minnesota public schools. So there are different components for the, for the Achievement Integration Program. There's a three-year plan. So we are finishing up one three-year plan and beginning a new one. And then each year, there's an annual budget that is approved, shared with the board and approved by the board. This year, the three goals, the three-goal areas are given to each of the districts that participate in Achievement and Integration. So Goal One, reducing disparities in academic achievement. Goal Two is a newer goal and ties right into the previous presentation, reducing disparities and equitable access to effective and more diverse teachers. So really honing in on professional development there and supporting teacher effectiveness and diverse teachers. And then Goal Three is something that we've had for many years, increasing racial and economic integration. And that really ties in, as you'll see with the collaboration that we have with St. Anthony New Brighton District, our neighboring district. There are constraints, of course, with the budget. The requirement is that at least eighty percent of the funding go towards direct student services. We tend to, we, we always budget more than the eighty percent. And then of the remaining, no more than twenty percent for professional development, and no more than ten for administrative costs within that twenty percent remaining. So again, we always, we must adhere to that, and we do adhere to that. So there's the three goals. Within those goals, there are five allowable strategies that we are to work on. And those include innovative and integrated, integrated pre-K-12 learning environments, family engagement initiatives that will increase student achievement, professional development focused on the achievement of all students, college and career readiness and rigorous coursework for underserved students, and recruitment and retention of racially and ethnically diverse teachers and administrators. The Department of Education lays out a timeline for us. So as you can see, start with planning in the fall, getting input, writing the budget, presenting to the school board, seeking approval. And then this is tied to the World's Best Workforce. And in terms of accountability, each December, we submit the, an accountability report to the state. So our development process, of course, we annually review the data and progress towards goals. This fall, we had a joint meeting here in Columbia Heights with our partners from St. Anthony New Brighton and members of the Department of Education Achievement and Integration Program. We're here as well to give us guidance and update us on the new components of the plan. We've also had, we've also sought input from our American Indian Parent Committee, our World's Best Workforce Committee, District Equity Team, and Administration. So on those committees, there are, that includes staff and community members and parents, so a wide variety. And those are all required. The Achievement and Integration Program is now directly aligned to the World's Best Workforce. So Tara Tucker and I work closely on both of those pieces to make sure that we're aligned. And in fact, the accountability reports are now together. It's one report that we have to submit each year. So looking at the budget, again, it's broken down into the general aid for achievement... So looking at the budget, again, it's broken down into the general aid for achievement and integration for direct support, professional development, and administrative costs. And then the incentive revenue, you can see there at the bottom, that is for the work that we do with our neighboring district, St. Anthony New Brighton, as approved by the Department of Education. So that's our allocation. This is about the same as last year. Very slight increase in, in the upper line and right around the same for, for last year. So it's stayed flat. We utilize this funding, I'll go, I'll go on and show you what we utilize the funding for, but we utilize the funding really to offset staff expenses to keep as many people in the district as possible. So with our, with the first goal focused on academic programming that will prepare students to be college and career ready, we're really looking at, as part of our meeting this fall with the Department of Education, they gave us the guidance to not only focus on the MCA test scores. They asked us to look beyond MCA test scores. Of course, we're looking at MCA test scores, right? But look at additional measures. So with college and career readiness, we're looking at a diverse pool of students, making sure they're having not just participation, but that they're being successful in our advanced placement programs and early college. So looking at grades and credit, college credit accrual, for example. And then pre-K through eighth grade, looking at academic growth on benchmark assessments. So that's that fast reading and math assessments that we can see three times a year over the course of this plan of three years. Goal Two is focused on professional development and really looking at the professional development that we're doing around mental health and culturally relevant instructional practices. How is that result, what are the results on our climate survey? What are students saying as a result of the climate that they're in? And then, of course, participation in culturally relevant professional development. And then doing classroom walkthroughs, reviewing that data to ensure implementation is happening. Goal Three is our summer seminar program that we have with St. Anthony New Brighton. We'll be going into, I think, our fifth year. So really looking at kids, students participating in that advanced coursework and being successful in high school with their academic growth. So what is this, what is this funding, the budget, what does it fund? Programs such as AVID. Right now, we have AVID K through 12, and there are fees that come along with that. We offset the costs of staff, teacher time during the days, supplemental materials, professional development, and college visits. A little bit of data about AVID. Last year, looking at our AVID 12th graders, they were accepted into 151 colleges, applied for over $1 million in scholarships, successfully completed AP and concurrent enrollment Anoka Ramsey courses, had a combined average GPA over three. And this, this last cohort was our first group to participate in summer seminar. Another program that this budget funds is early college. So of course, early college, our concurrent enrollment courses allow our students to earn high school credits right here at home, not have to leave campus. We, this funding also supports the buildup to those courses, so the additional support in ninth grade with math, 10th grade with English, and 11th grade exam course. We also have an academic specialist that is fully funded through this program to support the early college process. And then other fees and professional development. So again, a little data about our early college. Last year, 90 of our juniors and seniors who took the early college courses earned 100 college credits in English, pre-calculus, science, and art without ever having to leave campus or having to pay a dime for them. So that was exciting that they're, they're enrolling and being successful, getting the credit. Another portion of this funds is innovative learning, innovative and integrative learning environments. So here's an example of classroom partnerships, which is a program that we utilize through Equity Alliance Minnesota. And this is a visitor to Valley View who is preparing the students before their trip to Stages Theater. And they have a buddy classroom in Forest Lake, and so they all meet together and do work. The teachers receive professional development around creating inclusive environments and culturally relevant instruction. And then the students get hands-on field, field experiences as well. So this achievement integration funds that program as well. And then family engagement is a huge component to this grant, or to this program. Really, this budget funds a portion of our bilingual liaisons, which is just so crucial to the success of our students. And then, as you saw, up to 20% can be used for professional development, and it needs to be focused on culturally relevant and equitable practices. A couple of areas that we're focused on this year, we had Dr. Mohammed Khalifa come in on Martin Luther King Day to work with all licensed staff. And then also, we are piloting the Innocent Classroom at Highland right now, school-wide. And this budget fully funds that program as well. And we're seeing some really good success there. And I had to include the rockets for summer seminar, we're pretty excited about that one. We offer three different courses for summer seminar. These are students who are leaving eighth grade, transitioning into ninth grade, and they receive a high school credit, elective credit for this course, completing it. So students selected from an intensive writing course, an algebra code, coding class, and we've added video game design and rocketeering to that class as well. So a little physics and math. And then last year was our first year with entrepreneurial mindset, and this was down at the Junior Achievement Building in St. Paul, which is part of a business class. Very exciting. So again, just to wrap it up, this, this is complex, but so at the heart, there are, you know, the three goals around student achievement, professional development, and integration, integrative classrooms. And then we have strategies, and then the budget. So it's kind of the layers. So if there are any questions, this will come back for you for governance decisions in March.
So just real quick, and I'm not sure how to say this, but for the viewing public, I guess, even though there's really strict guidelines about what we're doing under some of these and very targeted populations under a lot of this, this really does benefit all of our students and staff, is that true?
It absolutely does. So the, a large portion of this program is fun, funds AVID. And AVID is all of our schools K-12, you know, K-12, so that, that's hitting everyone. And then also, for example, the early college preparation at the high school. In ninth grade, in 10th grade, in 11th grade, they're getting that additional preparation in math and reading and how to take college exams before they're entering early college. And, you know, this is really an additional funding so that we are able to offer those kinds of programs.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, thanks. Let's go to summer programs 2020.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, it is annually a joy to come in winter and talk about summer programs. And this evening, I'm here with Director Tuckerl and also Director John Frye so that we can review for you our summer programs for 2020. Our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And this evening, our presentation will focus on the core value of community, excellence, excellence and collaboration. This is informational presentation to the board, there are no governance questions with this presentation. The goals for our summer programming are to provide reading and math interventions for the students, opportunities to earn high school credits, English language support, opportunities for fitness, including aquatics, services required by IEPs, opportunities for enrichment, and also the high-quality childcare. In community education, we anticipate this summer continuing to offer our Summer Adventure Club program. With serving approximately 90 students, our Mini Adventures program, which is a year-round program, will continue through the summer, serving 40. We always offer driver's education, which is very popular. If you know a young person wanting to register, register early because that fills up quickly. We serve about 27 students in that program. We have a robust adult enrichment program during the summer with trips and fitness classes, serving about 50 students. And then this is our second summer of serving early childhood family education. And those programs we do out in the community, serving approximately 28 students. With activities and athletics, I'll just remind you that we have really developed a strong collaboration with our Columbia Heights Recreation Department. And then, so we meet with them with our Activities Department, who really does the coordinating with our coaches, and Jody Gadian, our community ed coordinator, to make sure that the summer offerings for sports programs are robust and are also aligned and not redundant with other offerings with our rec department. So this summer, you can see, we're planning on offering strength training that's paid for through our 21st Century Grant. Then we have football, basketball for girls, basketball for boys, volleyball for girls, dance for girls, swim and dive for girls and boys, softball, wrestling, tennis, and synchronized swim. These are the programs that we anticipate offering with the numbers that we would anticipate serving for activities and athletics.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, I get the pleasure to talk about special education and summer programming. The first line there talks about extended school year that's required through IEPs or ESY. The great thing about Columbia Heights is that this program, K to eight, is integrated into the summer encore programming, which is unique for the state of Minnesota, in my opinion, because it allows that inclusion opportunities that the students have been getting throughout the school year into the summer, which I think is very exciting. And it allows them to continue to work on some of those skills, whether it's social or academic, that they would otherwise not be working on during the summer. The second line there talks about early childhood, ECSE, where we serve, this is ages three to five, students three to five years of age, where we serve them here at the Family Center. And they have unique needs where they need additional self-sufficiency help over the course of the summer. And this last summer, we served 15 students here across two classrooms. And then finally, our birth to five, really it's birth to two ECSE home visits. We go out into the community and we continue to provide those services throughout the course of the summer as required by the law. We continue to get referrals of special ed through Help Me Grow for our birth to five population in Columbia Heights. And those home visits allows us, allow us to work with parents and caregivers to continue a continuity of support through the summer.
We're excited to continue the summer, summer encore program. This is a three-week session, which we invite students to join us and really focus in on the academics, but enrichment as well. So under encore, we're able to support both of them. And so we're excited to continue that again. Usually, we have a very full elementary section there. And our encore really is an option or an opportunity for our teachers to collaborate together and to come up with a theme. So teachers will come together and say, I think we want to focus this summer in on water. And so they'll really focus in on literacy and math with a theme of water, and the kids love it. Zena always takes the best pictures there, Director Stenvick, of kids playing with water and doing different math activities or literacy around it. So really connecting them all together. We have a lot of community partnerships in the summer encore as well, and that includes the ones listed, Junior Achievement. We have the Summer Vista for Adventure Club. We have the Public Library and the Rec Department, as mentioned earlier, as well as SparkY. And we're always continuing to seek out new partnerships to support our students in the summer. These are estimated numbers, which we are happy about. Last year, we had a lot of grade levels that were full, so we're looking at those numbers to determine how to support all of the students that want to engage in summer encore. So we offer elementary summer encore as well as middle school. And then we are excited because we have funds available this year in encore funding to support Environmental Camp, which we had a few years back, and so we're excited to bring that back for a week for our students. Some additional offerings that happen throughout the summer. Our AP teachers at the high school, many of them offer a boost class for students entering into their AP class, and that's been very successful for students. As Director Stenvick mentioned earlier about the summer seminar, we're going to continue the offerings as we did last summer with that. The Yale Home Reading Program is wonderful. It's an opportunity for teachers to go do home visits and support our students with literacy throughout the summer. And it's great because you think you're going in there to support a sixth-grade student, but you also might have a third-grade student in there or a pre-K student in there. So you really are going there and supporting the entire family, bringing books, reading, doing different lessons with them. And then we'll continue with 916 and our high school credit recovery, and the number of students for that will determine, as throughout the spring, for students that need it.
The schedule that we anticipate would be that Adventure Club will start up right after the school year is done, going June 1st to August 28th. Mini Adventures continues throughout the summer as well, June 1st to September 1st. Summer Academy will be June 15th to July 1st. Elementary Summer Encore will be July 7th through the 24th. Environmental Camp will then be that last full week in July, July 27th to the 31st. Secondary Summer Encore will be at the same time as elementary, July 7th through the 24th. Summer Seminar also during that time, so July is going to be a busy month here. And then Early Childhood Special Education also during that month of July. Our activities, athletics camps will be over the course of the summer, so that, that, those meet at various times. We will have a community ed catalog, just as we had last year, that will have all of those details. And we'll work with our Activities Department in terms of enrollment for students, and then individualized schedule for the high school credit recovery. And we hope to see everybody this summer.
Any questions?
I have one. In terms of the summer programming, when would families anticipate hearing about the offerings for encore and then also the camps? That's one part. And then also about registration for those summer programs? Is that going to be done the same way again, as it was last year with the online?
Yes. So I think, so first of all, we wanted to let you all know first about the plan.
Oh, of course, of course, yes.
And then we'll be spreading the word. And of course, working with our HR department to do the hiring and go through all of those processes. In terms of the registration for the athletic camps, I think it worked really well last year. We got good feedback about the system that we had, which was an online system. And so I anticipate that continuing again.
And I just am curious if there's going to be an alternative. I just, I remember talking to a few families that struggled with that.
Okay.
So that information being available maybe ahead of time or whatever.
Absolutely. And I believe that we also did a day at the Activities Department when people could come and register as well. But people can always come up to our community ed front desk, open 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. here at the district center. And we're happy to help anybody with enrollment.
That's very helpful to know, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Great, good question. Other questions? All right, well, we're excited for summer. If you could just bring the weather now, that would be excellent.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to the policy first readings at our Subcommittee on Policy. We talked about, I'm just going to read through these. 511 fundraising, 535 animal, service animals in schools and the form, 603 curriculum development, 611 homeschooling, 613 graduation requirements, 616 system accountability, 618 assessment of student achievement, 620 credits for learning, 705 investment, 709 student transportation safety policy, 713 student activities accounting, 720 vending machines, 721 federal uniform grant guidance, 902 use of school facilities and equipment. And these policies will appear on a future agenda for approval, so you'll see these come back, I assume, in March, our March meeting, yes. And we put these out there, our policy Subcommittee read them, these, they were reviewed and revised, different, different things. And just for people who are watching, there's an ongoing review of policy, and this is a part of that process. So these are up on our website, correct? Or people can find them, people can find them if they're interested in these reviews. So, any questions or concerns here? All right. Moving on, Superintendent Kelly.
Well, board members, it's that time of year where it's all about you. And unfortunately, the week is next week, and it would wind up on a work-study session, and we wanted to honor you on the TV. So we've moved it up a week, we've taken a little bit of discretion. First, I would like to read something from MSBA. This is their statement, and we all heartily agree with it. Columbia Heights Public Schools will join school districts throughout the state to salute their local education leaders during Minnesota's annual school board recognition week, February 17th through the 21st. Week, February 17th through the 21st. This commemorative week is designed to recognize contributions made by Minnesota School Board members across the state, including the Columbia Heights School Board, who are charged with governing public education under the state law. Our deepest appreciation is extended to the dedicated men and women who make it possible for local citizens to participate in the education of our community. We salute the public servants of the Columbia Heights Public School Board of Education, whose commitment and civic responsibilities make local control of public schools in our community possible. And right now, please join us by saying to our School Board members during Minnesota School Board Week, congratulations and thank you. So that, from this superintendent, I would just like to add to the MSBA that you are the leadership group that makes it all happen in this district. And the governance that comes out of this board, and boards in the past, has been amazing. And when you look at all the things that are accomplished, or just do you look at the things that are on display tonight, it would not be done without your approval, your vision. We are grateful for your strategic planning. We are grateful for the creation of the input of, with the community, our mission and vision. And so we like to think that we're in the best, we do things in the best interests of students, and we couldn't do it if you did not give us permission to do that and have the vision to allow us. So thank you for that. All formal stuff aside, we'd like to celebrate you in a couple of different ways. And there'll be lots of applause in a minute, I'm sure, from our, all the people in the audience.
Yes, huge crowd.
First off, first off, you have at your places a card. And this card, it was really done by Annika Duckwall last year. She was a graduating senior. It's called Interwoven. And it was chosen, because her theme was a multimedia collage, and it was chosen in 2018 for the Sister Cities Project. And her ideas were global citizens, resilient communities. And it strives to represent how personal and group identities encompass our diverse cultures and frameworks through shared symbols of hope and peace, and that people may come together to feel strength, empowerment, and belonging. So that is our hearts in the arts. And a little bit, as you write, use these, think of your tremendous contribution to all of these things on the card, and to Annika Duckwall, who did a really great job as well. So in addition to that, and I swiped your card, Natty. In addition to that, because you are the very best, we have your traditional blue and gold cookie, hand-baked, I'm sure by Dawn, not me.
Mm-hmm.
And so enjoy that. All the calories, I'm sure, are taken out of it. And then to go with that, if that weren't enough to give you the big cookie, we have a wellness bag under the table, okay? And so that is really given to us by the Wellness Committee, that has all kinds of things in there. You can't, it's on display, but you can really open the bag and see what's in it. And so when you're done with the cookies, there's things in there for your water and your salads and all the stuff that I'm sure that you will be doing. It's an insulated bag. And so we appreciate you, and we wanted to make sure that you, you had your special gifts as well. Last, but not least, we want to recognize your service to the community. And so this is the time where we do the certificates. And so I will walk over there, and Kristin will be taking pictures. And so bring your smiles, and I'll be calling you up.
Put blue across your.
Can we just do a group picture? That would be nice.
Yeah, we could do a group.
Let's just do a group. Can we just do a group?
No, we're serious.
I'm going to start with John Larkin, because he's top on the pile. And this says, this is a certificate of appreciation for John Larkin, for dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to the students of this community for the past seven years. Congratulations. Thank you. Next up is Molly Lewis. Oh, John. Don't swear.
You're pointed away from the mic.
This certificate is for Molly Lewis, and this is a certificate of appreciation for dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to the students of this community for the past five years. Congratulations.
Don't forget to shake their hands, Molly.
Don't forget that part.
Don't forget to watch your mouth, Molly.
The next up, board member to call up, is Hala Summer. This is presented to Hala Summer for dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to the students of this community for the past three years. Congratulations, Molly. Laura Palmer, you're up next. Laura, this certificate is presented to you for dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to the students of this community for the past nine years.
Thank you.
Lauren Mule. This certificate is for dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to the students of this community for the past three years. Congratulations, Lauren. Last, but certainly not least, is Natty Severson. Natty, this certificate is for dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to the students in this community for the past four years. Congratulations. Honestly, we couldn't do it without you. So both individually and as a group, we are so proud to work for a district that has such wonderful leadership. Thank you all, one and all, and let's have another. A round of applause for our board.
She's going to take another picture. Should we look useful or pose?
How about a smile?
All right. Thank you. Well, thank you so much for that, for the nice gifts, for the bags and the cookies. And I'm glad to see there's an appropriate spelling of "your" here. I kind of laughed and thought, oh, if only that would have been screwed up, it would have made my night. Good job. An often missed one.
You're worth it.
Thank you. "Your" with an apostrophe, "worth it." All right, all right. All right, on to the action items. So first up, the 2020-2021 school calendar. Wow, 20, that seems like it's future time, but it's here.
It's here.
2021.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. In your board packet was a copy of the 2020-2021 school calendar. The committee met, it's made of staff members, parents, teachers. And we look at, the calendar was a lot easier this year than last year, I will admit. We do have a spring break planned, so a lot of staff and students should be very happy about that. And it did go a lot smoother, I think, just with the way that we don't have to end so early. So we'll go into the second week of June this year because of a late Labor Day start. But besides that, everything else, we try to keep short weeks to a minimum, but they do happen with staff development and holidays in there. So tonight, I'm here seeking approval of the 2020-2021 school calendar.
Right. Can we get a motion to move that forward?
No move.
John?
Second.
Molly? Discussion? Questions?
I have one question. For the, for the people who are involved in the Calendar Committee, and I know, like you said, it was a lot easier this year than last year. I've had just one comment, I think, from somebody on the potential calendar for next year. If, if somebody wants to be involved in the process or be part of the committee, how would they go about doing that?
I would have them, if it's a parent, have them speak to their principal. Because usually what I do is about January, I ask the principals who their parent committee member is, and then they work through the building, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks. More questions?
It's a lot of work.
It is.
To gather everybody.
Thank you for doing it.
I think it looks great.
Align it with testing and, yeah.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obstein? Motion carries. All right. Summer Academy Joint Powers Agreement.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Previously, the board was presented with information on the idea of extending the Summer Academy Joint Powers Agreement by one year. This year, as an exploratory for a potential second site. So just as a reminder, Summer, Summer Academy is a three-week summer program for gifted and talented students. Columbia Heights Public Schools has been the host, both the phys, the site host and the fiscal host, for over 20 years. The program fills very fast, and so therefore, the director is seeking a second location on the east side of the metro area. I recently met, you know, we took some time this fall to have those conversations, to see where we're at in terms of sites and whatnot. I met with the Director of Summer Academy and the, at the Summer Academy Board, and it sounds like people do want to pursue this one-year joint powers agreement. And then this spring, there'll be a decision made. If, if there is a viable site with all of the logistics in place, so we're taking this year. But it does, it does need to be approved prior to a registration, which happens in March. So I'm here seeking approval for the Summer Academy Joint Powers Agreement, one-year extension. And the full agreement, the updated one-year agreement, was in the board packet for you.
All right. Can I get a motion to move that forward, please?
No move.
Give it to Laura. Second?
Second.
All right, thanks, Lauren. Any discussion, questions? This is something we've known about for quite a while, and we're finally here to vote on it. All right, so we have the motion for the Joint Powers Agreement for Summer Academy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obstein? Motion carries. All right, thanks. The American Indian Education Parent Committee Concurrents.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Each year, the Parent, American Indian Parent Committee votes on concurrence or not. And so on January 23rd, the committee did issue a vote of concurrence. And so you were presented with that information at the last School Board meeting, and I believe it's also in your School Board packet as well. This goes to the Department of Education with the signed resolution, and also the roster of who is actually on our committee. It's pretty exciting, we have students on our committee. Many generations, you know, come to the meetings. And this will be going to the Department of Education in March. So this evening, I'm seeking approval of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Resolution of Concurrents.
All right, can we get a motion to move that forward?
No move.
Molly?
Second.
Hala? Any questions, discussion? All right. For the motion for the American Indian Education Parent Committee Concurrents, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obstein? Motion carries. Building capacity, also something we heard about.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. This year, we're seeing a large group of ninth-grade students, so well over 300. And those students will be moving into 10th grade. So previously, the board received information on that enrollment information. And so this evening, I'm seeking approval to close Columbia Heights High School, Grade 10, to open enrollment, so not to resident students, for the 2021 school year.
Motion, motion to carry that forward, sorry.
No move.
Thanks, Laura.
Second.
Hala. Now discussion.
I, I, I can't believe 300 students. I mean, you know, that's, that's huge. That's the biggest class in how many years?
That I can recall.
It's one of the biggest classes I've seen since I've been here in 22 years. I'm just going to put it out there, yeah.
Bigger than when I was here. Early 90s.
So will that, is it re, the, the middle school will, will remain closed, correct? This is because they're moving a grade level? Is that why we have to redo that, or?
Yep, so the, the middle school is remained closed, remaining closed, and that's part of the previous resolution. And then we discussed at a previous board meeting, based on our current enrollment and projections for next year, opening up the other schools, except for this, you know, this prediction of 10th grade class, since they're over in 300 right now in ninth grade.
All right, sounds good.
And I realize that you said it earlier, but just to restate, so nobody panics, if any student in our district wants to come, of course, they're still able to.
Absolutely.
They always have room for our.
I always encourage.
It's closed for open enrollment outside the district.
I think just a clarification, you kind of touched on this. Currently, ninth grade is closed for open enrollment. But will ninth grade be open for open enrollment next year and 10th grade closed? Is that correct?
That's correct. So at the high school next year, ninth grade would be open as, to open enrollment, along with 11th and 12th grade, just 10th grade would be closed to open enrollment, not resident students.
And if students are currently open enrolled, but they're in our district, they can continue to attend even in 10th grade. It's for new entering students.
That's correct, yes. If they're currently with us in, in ninth grade, they'll, they will roll right into our 10th grade class, absolutely.
And the reason we're opening up the ninth grade class is because it's a smaller, it's not a, it's, it's a smaller class, so there's room. And so we're welcoming students into that, but we will also look in the fall. It's not unusual to come back in the fall, once the placement center has been very busy in August, and close a grade level either at the elementaries or at the secondaries. So you could forecast that as well, too, because although we're opening ninth grade, it is a pretty full class, so there will not be that many more spots left for open enrollment.
Any more questions? All right, on the motion to close Grade 10 for capacity in the 2020-21 school year, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obstein? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. And, and last but not least, for our action items, is the School Board Member, School Liaison Role Definition. That was included in your board packets from Friday, and it's in front of you on your computer screens, if you want to take a look. Did anyone have an opportunity to, oh, we need a motion to carry this forward.
No move.
Thanks, Molly. Second?
Second.
John? All right, now we can discuss. So this was in your School Board packet. Did people read it? It's very similar in language to the city lia, or to the, to the, oh, the city liaison's coming, never mind, you haven't seen that yet. That's at our work session next week. It's all so confusing. All right, thoughts on this discussion?
I'll, I'll comment. I, you know, appreciate this, and we had put this together about a year or so ago as a draft. And I think, you know, having some time to tweak it a little bit, to really help us identify when we're assigned to the school as a liaison, just what, what that looks like, for our own sake, so that we know what's expected of us. But I think it's also helpful for the building, you know, teachers and students and, and parents and anybody else who might be interested to know, what is the role of a school, a School Board liaison? So I think this provides a, a good direction in that.
Any thoughts on, is the, the language as it stands?
Hala, that's good.
All right. All right, all those in favor approving this liaison role?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstein? All right, motion carries. On to board topics. What do we have?
Just one item I talked about last meeting, the city's coffee with a cop is also a blood drive this year on February 26th. So they can contact the city to sign up for that, but encouraging folks to do that.
On the 20th, we will be up at North Park Elementary School during their conferences for a, who's, you and I, is that you and I? For an listening session. So if parents want to swing up there on February 20th, I have that date right, right, John?
Wednesday?
Wednesday, the 20th.
I'll be there with you.
Oh, it's you and I, okay. Oh, it's you and I, okay. If people want to come up and have a conversation with a School Board member in a more casual setting than a board meeting, we would love to talk to you there. Look for us by the banner, it's a pop-up banner that says, "Talk to a Board Member," and we would love to talk to you a little bit more about that.
We also have the 26th.
I have the 20th.
You're probably with me on the 26th.
The 26th, okay.
At Valley View.
We are the 20th.
At Valley View, okay.
Yeah, I'm at North Park.
So, at 26th, at Valley View.
At Valley View. We also have a listening session.
It's a Wednesday. And we're on the 20th and.
During conferences.
Okay.
We would love to talk to you. We're hoping to get into the buildings where people are, and even if it's just stop and introduce yourself as parents, you don't need to have a special agenda, it's just getting to know community members, hearing what's important to people, meeting their kids. We'd love to do that, so. I also forgot to mention that I went to the one-act play, which was funny. They were funny. It's obviously a very small cast, and it was a really quick production, they had a really quick turnaround time, but it was very fun to see the kids do the performance. It was on the Highland stage, so it made me extra, extra excited to see the P A C open back up and get kids back up on that fine stage, because as you can imagine, there were some lighting difficulties, and everything was just a little bit harder in the Highland stage than it will be in a really brand-new performing arts center, so.
That directed by two former students.
Two former Heights students, yep.
Who directed that. I was out of town, unfortunately, I was, I'm sad to have missed that, I heard it was great.
I saw it twice, and there were some, apparently, I missed the third and final performance, and they, the directors encouraged them to improv, and so, they spent the whole performance trying to throw each other off, and I guess it became very, very funny. The premise of it was speed dating, so it started with a pretty funny premise, but the directors encouraged them to improv, and apparently, it was hilarious. So, sad I skipped that one, so. Other board topics?
I just wanted to go back to, for a second, to the, our listening sessions. I'd like to suggest that we have them listed under the announcements.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Where there's important dates.
Yep, that's a good idea.
To just consistently have them in there.
Excellent. Other board topic? All right. I guess that concludes our meeting at 8:35 PM.